Ten, on March 4th. This is the workshop for the Carson City Planning Commission. Would you take, call the role, please?
Chairperson Borders. Vice Chair Doors.
Here.
Commissioner Eswine, excuse me. Commissioner Perry. Commissioner Preston. Commissioner Tingle. Commissioner Wiggins.
Here.
Aqualamis present.
Thank you. The public is invited at this time to comment on and discuss any topic that is relevant to or within the authority of the Planning Commission, including any item that is not specifically included on the agenda at this time. Is there any public comment? Modification of the agenda? Items on the agenda may be taken out of order. Lee, is there any modification?
Nope, got the one item.
Pardon?
Just one item today.
Okay. So, Item D1, for discussion only. Discussion regarding possible amendments to CCMC Chapter 18.02 Administrative Provisions. Lee Plumm.
Yes, thank you. For the record, Lee Plumm, Community Development Director. This is the first in a series of public workshops to start taking comment on amendments to Title 18. Today, we're going to be covering Title 1802 Administrative Provisions. Ultimately, the goal is to go through this chapter and three or four more chapters to bring a comprehensive package of amendments to the Board of Supervisors by the end of the year. Up on the screen there, just a little bit of a schedule, kind of reminder of what we're doing for, just for this particular chapter of code, we're planning on having two more opportunities after this for the public to make comments and get incorporated into recommendations to the Board. We have the workshop today. We'll take this on April 2nd to the Board of Supervisors for additional comment, and we'll incorporate any suggestions from today. And then the plan is to come back later in April with final recommendations on this chapter. If you'll recall, kind of want to also mix in with that, as I said, through the year, there's other chapters coming forward. The next one's going to be moving on to the Definitions and Uses, chapter of Title 18. Your next Planning Commission workshop specifically dedicated to Title 18 is not until May 6th. It had to do with some other scheduling, but also, it's a good opportunity to have that extra month because eighteen, the definitions and the uses, where we talk about permitted uses, is where there's some real substance to a lot of the changes. So, it gives us a little extra time to put some drafts together, get it out to you in time for you to review it well ahead of the meeting, and for the public to look at it well ahead of the meeting. And then we'll have similar, kind of overlapping as we go through the year for a couple of additional chapters out of that. So, what I'd like, so what's before you today? Again, we have draft changes based on prior discussions, based on changes we've discussed internally that need to be made, based on cleanup, a lot of changes based on the version 1.0 of the District Attorney's Ordinance Drafting Manual with all the correct way things are to be written. So, you'll see, you have two attachments. One's draft changes, draft ordinance style with all the changes, and then there's a clean version with, as if all those changes may be just easier to read. There's changes throughout. They are, by far, in this chapter, mostly just technical changes, clarifications of You know, a lot of the things in the manual, things like just capitalization of Planning Commission. The definition of commission is the Planning Commission, and when commission's used referring to the Planning Commission, we're going to capitalize it, that type of thing. So, there's a lot of those throughout there. Another one that kind of came up frequently was when referring to time periods within which you have to do something, and it's, so, submit X within 30 days of Y. When, within 30 days can be 30 days before, 30 days after, what you really need to do is specifically say if you mean 30 days before or 30 days after. So, there's a lot of those types of changes. So, there's that, and this, and in Chapter 1802, as I kind of mentioned earlier, this is going to be one of the easier chapters to go through in that it's very, it's the administrative processes which are largely defined by NRS. So, there's not a lot of room for discussion where, for example, if it says the Planning Commission shall take action within 45 days or something, that comes straight out of NRS. It's not really debatable for us today. So, although the timeframes that are in there for, by and large, are already established by NRS. So, the verbiage is just clarification. So, what I planned on doing was going through some of the substantive changes that we need to talk about. Where, I want to talk about the substantive changes, where there's some opportunities for clarifications in wordsmithing, the way things read, so they're understood better, and they mean what they need to mean. You know, I'd be happy to take those types of comments as well. But, there's some substantive changes listed in the staff report, including some additions, but even of those changes, it's, a lot of those are still just writing down what we do, kind of the, like the continuance application, you know, a paragraph on continuances, a paragraph on withdrawal, those are things we do, they're procedures we have, they're just writing them out and shuffling them around and putting them in the right place. So, I'm not going to spend a lot of time going on that sort of thing. So, getting to the, what I would call the substantive changes that I think definitely warrant a bit of discussion on Title 18 is to talk about the findings. You know, through both, through the master, so in 1802 and the procedures, it's also where you have the procedures for the various types of zoning applications, including, you know, you have the Master Plan Amendment, zoning map amendments, and zoning code amendments, special use permits, variances, administrative permits, all of which have findings associated with them. Findings are not, interestingly, are not something that are spelled out of what you have to have in terms of findings in NRS. But, they are, they're very important legal part of a city's ability to take these actions on a property and justify. So, kind of, there's a general standard that, you know, the, a city, a county can do something as long as it's in the general public interest. And it's kind of these, so how you do that, and this is very typical, common planning thing, how you do that is through findings. You're making the finding of public interest in these, and therefore are able to take these actions on, that require property owners to do a specific thing on their property. So, findings are important. A lot of, a lot of what's in there, in modifying, what's kind of drafted in there, as I mentioned in the staff report, comes from, based on Reno's new code and new findings. Also, kind of, some of the verbiage as noted in there, just kind of based on standard best planning practices, but that's what I'd like to go through. And going through the findings, starting with the finding on master plan consistency, it's a finding that is a thread throughout a lot of the findings, most of the types of applications. So, not just with the Master Plan Amendment, but it's also with the special use permit, administrative permit. So, I'd like to go through and go through what the current finding says, and what the proposed finding says, and we'll stop after one and discuss it. So, currently, our finding that's in the code now related to consistency of master plan, you know, just says that the proposed amendment, the proposed, if it's a special use, it says the proposed use, but same idea, is in substantial compliance with the goals, policies, and action programs of the master plan. Planning Commission, and when things go to the Board of Supervisors, take that finding in consideration to make it, finding in the affirmative to approve it or otherwise. So, looking at it, and looking at what Reno has done, and I think it's a good idea, and I think it has actually come up in the discussion, well, what is, in considering that finding, what should you consider? What should the Planning Commission consider? So, adding this, I think, is an effort, is an effort to identify how you should be looking at it, and this is going to come up in a couple other findings later as we go through this. But, with master plan in particular, I think this, the proposed verbiage, which, in considering this finding, the Commission shall weigh competing plan, goals, policies, and action programs. It's kind of what the original one implies. And then, it says, "and may approve an application that provides above public benefit even if some of the goals, policies, or action programs in the master plan are inconsistent with the proposed amendment." Why would it say that? Because there are actually consistent, inconsistent plans. Preserving open space is not consistent with developing new housing. I mean, that's not to pick specific policies, but, you know, you can have somebody hanging their hat on one policy even though there's a whole bunch of other policies here that we're promoting. So, it's a way to kind of legally acknowledge that there are competing interests even within the master plan, and you're considering those in doing it. So, that's a lot of explanation, kind of background, but now, getting into this, I'll stop there and talk about this one.
So, before we even get down the road here, I'm wondering, do we have a clear definition of general public interest? Because if we are looking at these findings, and they are based on the general public interest, I would really like to know what that definition is, if we could start out with that.
No, I said general public interest. It's not in the findings.
The term is public benefit. You're using the term public benefit.
No, I, so, in describing, I wasn't describing the, I wasn't intending on, when I said, what was the term, general public, what was the term?
General public.
I wasn't talking about the specific findings. I was talking about the general ability granted by the state to cities to zone property, is that, the rules, the rules that you impose have a public purpose. And I'm not, look at it, Ben, do you know any, what laws, what's the right term for that, for zoning? But, yeah.
I just would like to add.
And, it's not defined. It's not defined in NRS either, and it's the kind of things that people go to court over on individual decisions and end up arguing their side before a judge. But, to your public benefit and public interest, I would say that in going further with these descriptions as we go through the findings, it's kind of the intent of our purpose when we're looking at these findings, to help us defend decision, to help the city defend decisions when appealed and when having to go before a judge, and to help, I mean, that's the ultimate legal umbrella. It's also to help you in reviewing and making decisions.
This is one of the things that I had some comment on. First, if you're going to say "some," I think you need, we need some guidance on where that, you know, how that might be applied, because, you know, is "some" just a few, one or two minor pieces of the master plan that might not be in conformance, or is it a lot? Or is it, what is it exactly? "Some" is pretty nebulous to me. And then, I think it might be clearer if we stuck in there, just prior to where you've got the new language, "master plan," period, in considering this finding, that sentence in, under consistency with the master plan, where it should, I think it should say something to the effect of, "The proposed amendment is in substantial compliance with the goals, policies, and action programs of the unamended portions or provisions of the master plan." Because, otherwise, you know, which master plan are you talking, are you talking about? The amendment? Are you talking about an amended piece? Or, it just is confusing to me.
What if it said the adapted master plan? Because I don't know.
Yeah, yeah. Just to be clear that it's not, you know, which one it is that we're talking about. But, I still think that there needs to be some sort of guidance on, or criteria for weighing when you can make a decision where it's not in conformance.
It sort of seems like it's supposed to be purposely nebulous, to use your parlance, but, because like, you know, it's up to us, to kind of touch back on what Hope was saying, it's up to us to determine, or the Board, or whomever's looking at it, to determine what is a public benefit, one by one, and then, it seems like if someone takes issue with that, we're then saying "some," sort of purposefully to say, well, it could be one, or it could be a hundred, you know, points that it goes against, but, you know, it's sort of up to each commissioner individually, is the way I read it, for what it's worth.
Yeah, that's the way I read it.
Yeah, and I think, and, well, it brings up a good point to kind of consider going along, too. When you put, when you put a number in there, if it's fifty, if it's 75% of the policies or, if you wanted to put, right, I mean, then you're, now you've got to live with that, and if it's ever not that, and you're trying to make a decision. Yeah, I'm looking earlier in some of the other.
Well, instead of saying "some," you could say generally consistent.
Even if any of the goals.
You know, "may approve the application that provides public benefit even if..."
But again, how do you define public benefit?
Therein lies my problem, basically, with a lot of this, is define public benefit. If somebody can define that, then I think, I would have a little bit easier time on some of these items that come to us.
The reality is, the public benefit to this commission is what the majority of this commission thinks.
Yeah, I think that's why we do the committee. In the legal standpoint, that's why we do the commissions.
I think that's what you're, you know, of the community.
Does it have to have a public benefit, or can we just strike that out? "May approve an application even if the goals, policies are not consistent with the action plan?" I mean, public benefit, or is this for the applicant's benefit, or are we just trying to not be detrimental to the community?
Yeah.
So, maybe we don't need to define public benefit?
Yeah, because if we're defining public benefit, I can tell you, I get a lot of input on public benefit from people I know around the community. Yeah, so, I'm just thinking, there has to be something that we do with that. If we're going to put public benefit in there, we have to be able to define it, I would think, if we're making a decision based on that.
Well, but we're almost, we're almost doubly defining it, because in the beginning, it says, "The proposed amendment is in substantial compliance." Substantial compliance infers that it doesn't comply with everything, but it's pretty close. So, why are we saying it again?
Well, wouldn't it kind of go against, to begin with? I mean, if it was in substantial compliance, we wouldn't be hearing it. So, it's only...
No, that's, no, that's not true. You have to change.
You have to make the finding is, in fact, in substantial compliance.
But, in the first place, what are we talking about having to make the findings on? If it was in substantial, right, and if it was in substantial compliance with the master plan, I mean, I guess, things, there are errors, but if it's in substantial compliance, then it's not something that they're looking for a variance by definition.
Okay.
You wouldn't have to vary it if it's in substantial compliance with what's already there. I don't know, maybe that's...
No, it's not, yeah, no, it's not a variance. I mean, it's a rezoning from industrial commercial, when the master plan says it should be commercial, so it is in compliance, but you still have to go through and make that finding, so it's not. Okay, I was digging through because I was thinking about, you're talking about a standard of decision. So, going back to 1802-050 review, and in fact, I added Paragraph 4 to talk about the burden of proof based by a preponderance of evidence to provide facts supporting the proposed application. So, that's, and that's the standard of your decision, is a preponderance of evidence. That's where the attorney can talk about what that, what that level of standard is. It's not a super, it's not beyond a shadow of a doubt at all, it's a little bit more than, you're just swayed, so, that's where, you can't define public benefit, I don't think, for everybody. It's going to be based on the evidence that's provided. Public benefit to a member of the public is different than public benefit in, in general. That would be really hard to define. And, just, right, I mean, it's based on a preponderance of evidence. One person may come in, and it doesn't benefit them, and they're a member of the public, but is that mean that then it's not a public benefit at all?
Well, and in that case, I agree that we just take it out. Why do we put, why do we want to put an undefied term in there that can cause us nothing but heartburn?
So, yeah, like, you may approve an application even if some of the, even if...
Why don't we say "any"?
Some of the goals or policies, understanding that you're reviewing it based on a preponderance of evidence, I don't think you need, and the reason that's said in that one paragraph is so that you don't have to say that with every finding, that's just a standard of review.
Why don't we have it say, to touch on both of the points brought up, "may approve an application that provides," or "may approve an application even if any of the goals, policies, or action programs in the master plan are inconsistent with the proposed amendment." That's, that gives you a starting point.
You're regardless.
Well, we're not supposed to, but in theory, we could, right? I mean, that's the same thing it's saying.
Yeah, "some" is intended to apply that...
Yeah, I understand what it means. I just, it just struck, I'm just bringing it up because it struck me as, you know, maybe we, there was a way to clarify that. That's, that's your...
Well, it's a massive jelly right now, and this is not helping the jelly set at all.
Well, it's bringing it up.
Yeah, but, no, I mean, by leaving it the way it is, it doesn't help, us in our decision-making doesn't help anybody else, because it's too amorphous out there. We take the public benefit out, and we have the other requirements. I think it makes it a little, a little bit better. Then it becomes back to, like I said before, your personal judgment, you know? We are the body politic for this, that issue.
So, if the theory is that, okay, the City Planning Department has gone through their steps, and they have found their findings, and they bring it to this body, that means that they've gone through their steps, and now it's up to us to say yea or nay that it's approved or not approved? Is that, or are we just a, are we just like, okay, everything that you guys bring us, if you say it's okay, then we are obligated to approve it?
No, no. When does that ever happen?
I'm just trying to get clear, that, you know, I understand taking the public benefit out, but I think, you know, I just, that question was brought to me by someone in the community, it's like, okay, what is your responsibility?
Well, but our, but our normal response has always been, if the staff provides us with the findings in fact, and we disagree with them, then personally, I vote no because of, I can't make finding number two even though somebody else can. I don't think we're trying to take that away.
You might have touched on this in the very beginning when you were talking about getting this from Washoe County or Reno. Have we ran into problems with the first one, the current one? Are we reinventing the wheel on this?
Only in that, I mean, I think you've had people present to you that you can find something in the master plan that would be contrary to something that they're particularly against. So, I think this is just, it just acknowledges that every development's not going to be consistent with in furthering every policy in the master plan. So, there may be some inconsistencies, and we are giving ourselves the right to make, you're giving yourselves the right, as a city, to make those types of decisions. I think that's the purpose of it. But, okay, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna move on to special, let's go to the special use permit.
Yeah, I think, to finish that last one, I think we're, my sense is that we feel better about it if we take the public benefit part out.
Okay. So, we're going to move to the special use permit section of findings in 1802-080 in Paragraph, Paragraph 5.
What page is it?
Well, on the, 20 with the markings, page 20 with the markings on it. So, these have been, these have been rewritten in whole, and so, I'm going to try to go through one at a time and relate them to the existing ones. So, I think they're, the way they're rewritten, they relate to the current ones, and so I'm going to go through them one by one like that. And also note that I think these, these findings relating to public health, safety, welfare, neighborhood compatibility are throughout, they might be a little different in the other, in the other types of applications, but the, whatever we come up with for these specific ones here would be used accordingly in the other, in any other ones, like the administrative permit in particular, but even back into the master plan amendments for the, for the character and compatibility and public health, safety, and welfare. So, we've talked about A already, which is the master plan amendment, which, again, any changes, new A, is that same as old A? Yeah, same as old A. So, A deals with the consistency with the master plan, so we've talked about that in the last one. So, moving on to B, the proposed finding being, "The proposed location of the uses in accordance with the objectives of this title and the purpose of the zoning district in which the site is located, which corresponds to prior finding E, which just says that same thing, a little different. This is really not intended to be a change, just a little bit of cleanup of the verbiage, meets the definition and specifics set forth elsewhere for this title for such particular use, and meets the purpose statement of that district." So, that's the same. I think it's one of the things that we want in there. If it's something in retail commercial, it's a use that meets the purpose statement of that, of the retail commercial district, okay? I think that's an easy one, you can, any questions on that one?
Should we number it, so it's similar to the findings of fact that staff presents to us, like number one, number two, number three, sort of mechanism? So, it's consistent?
No.
Actually, in the code, they're ABC. I just always, it's easier when presenting to do one, two, three, so in the staff report, I always say, oh, with a special use permit, there's seven findings of fact, finding number two, because it's easier to speak to it that way, but indeed, our code right now does use ABCD and so on.
Well, and to your, no, manual says, the second paragraph in is ABC. But alternatively, I mean, it's something we can look, we can look at in the staff report to make it consistent.
It's a lot easier to speak to it that way.
Yeah. Okay. I'm going to move on, because it starts getting more complicated now. Now, we have, we currently have one finding B that encompasses, says a lot of things, so there, it's a little bit split out, and I'm going to cover that across a couple of new findings. With new finding C being the, at the bottom there, proposed finding, "The proposed site, location, and scale, intensity, density, height, layout, setbacks, architecture, and overall design of the development, and the uses proposed contribute to and enhance the character of area in which it is located." It provides pretty specific things to look at that aren't currently in those findings of just material damage or prejudice to other properties in the vicinity, or compatibility with, and preserves the character in adjacent neighborhoods, so... So this intends to further define that. And I have port, I have a portion of B grade out there because those specific statements I'm gonna, are covered in another new finding. Any questions on this proposed finding C or suggestions? And this is, I, I mean, and I understand this is hard to go through. You have the not seeing it all in context and it, I couldn't do it this way, I couldn't put them all existing and current up on the screen. So we can circle back to anything as we go through this as we need it, as needed.
How do, how do we define, enhance the character of the area? The last part of C.
Yeah, the char, the characteristics of, you know, compatibility, character, character, right? Yeah. Well, it's considering, I, I, I think that's.
Character is another word that's subject to real interpretation.
It is, and I think the other words in there help you identify what you're looking at, which is the scale of development, intensity, height, et cetera.
Is it similar to, and?
Yeah.
To other?
Is it a high-rise next to single-family residences, right? Can I move to the next one and go through it? Well, actually, I have two on, after saying that, I have two on this one because they kind of go across a couple of different current findings. Again, we have B there again, which has, I think, kind of three, kind of distinct levels of statements in there currently. And then F, which is generally will not be detrimental to the health, public safe, say, health, safety, convenience, and welfare period, which is another one of those things that aren't, aren't specifically well, well defined. So therefore, in the proposed new finding, it's that the proposal, whichever that might be, will not be material, materially detrimental to the public health, safety, and welfare. So it says the same things, but then adds, the factors to be considered in evaluating this finding shall include, and there's actually three, the third one of which is traffic, which is a separate one that I'm gonna cover later. So in considering this materially detrimental to public health and safety, whether you can, you are considering property damage or nuisance resulting from noise, vibrations, fumes, odor, dust, glare, or physical activity, those are the similar things that are covered in the existing finding, and any, any hazard to person or property from possible explosions, explosion, contamination, fire, flood, also similar to the things covered in the, in the current finding. Secondly, while we're on this page, just moving on to find, finding E, proposed finding E at the bottom there, which is the characteristics of the proposed use is reasonably compatible with the types of uses permitted in the surrounding area. So that, the other finding, previous one, talked about the height, bulk, setbacks, and other character, this type's reasonably compatible with the use, which again, kind of addresses that middle finding up there in B, in, in red there that is compatible with and preserves the character integrity of adjacent development and neighborhoods. So I think there's a couple that address that. Any questions or comments on these?
You gonna go back to number three later about traffic?
Yes.
Okay.
Traffic's coming up next.
Okay.
I have a question on F. I think it, the change makes perfect sense, but I'm wondering about, there's nothing about well, public welfare in the new proposed F. It just says, you know, do, will not overburden, and then it lists all the services.
Welfare.
But it doesn't say, you know, the, the, the old F says, you know, will be detrimental to public welfare. So I worry about removing the detriment to public welfare out of there.
The new finding is D, it's health, safety, and welfare.
Up here. The new, well, right, but F you strike out, okay, you do mention welfare in D.
Yeah, it is.
I understand that, I'm just, F is struck out and changed to the use will not overburden. But I see, okay, so you do mention welfare up top.
Put it in more consistent.
All right, I got it.
I was just saying that two red things are in the middle, one's the victory, one is reasonably compatible and one is not.
Yeah, and I'm not sure that's the right, right ones to reference here, because again, I just went back a slide there. So the one really that talks about compatibility is compatible with and preserves the character is related to these things, scale, intensity, height, setbacks, et cetera. So I just thought as well, as I pulled this up, that might not be, that, E, E at the bottom there in red is very specific to special use permits because it talks about the use and the use is reasonably compatible with the other, with the uses permitted in the surrounding zoning districts, which, which touches on character but is not as specific as those other character-defining things.
Well, you just said something key. You said surrounding zoning districts, up here we say area. Should we say zoning districts?
Well, I, I think I meant the surrounding properties, the surrounding area.
Okay.
Regardless of zoning district.
Okay.
Is, is compatible, so it, you, any compatibility, you're gonna consider what the use is, how far it is away from, how far they are away, and those types of things that are very application-specific. And I actually, so, so this is one that's, that's come up a lot. Will have little or no detrimental effect on vehicular or pedestrian traffic. So that's been taken currently to mean it still meets the level of service. There's no development that is not gonna add traffic. You can write, every new person here is gonna add another, another few trips of vehicle traffic, a new business is gonna add traffic. And, and it's currently interpreted, we, we have a plan for long-term, for when properties are built out and we're dealing with traffic and that's used. And, and I, I sort of like the approach here, well, I don't know if I, I won't say I like the approach. I'm proposing the approach that, to further define that, to say what the factors to be considered in evaluating that is any impact on the area surrounding resulting from unusual volume or character of traffic as compared to the volume or character of traffic that could be expected from permitted uses within the zoning district in which the property is located. This is basically what I've said when I've been asked the question, well, how can, how can a new use not have a, not be detrimental to traffic? And that's kind of the answer, that's, I mean, that's, that's basically the answer I've, I've given, and it is what Reno is proposing to use too, that it's not, it's, will not result from any, it won't cause an impact resulting from an unusual volume or character of traffic. Any thoughts on that?
It's another, it's another ball of jello. I understand what you're trying to say. You know, we, we know, we know that.
Well, I mean, so, so what's before you, you get, you get, you get subdivision comes before you in zoning that allows that subdivision, it's vacant property, it's residential, it's gonna be developed for that residential, it's gonna cause more traffic, because somebody comes and tells you it's gonna cause more traffic.
Yeah.
But it's not gonna cause traffic beyond what you would anticipate traffic to be for the types of uses that are permitted there.
Yeah.
That's, so that's what I'm trying to say.
Okay, say that.
Well, it doesn't, I think that's how I read it.
Really?
Exactly.
Okay, all right. Well, that, I, I fixed in my mind, I'm thinking of, you know, our build-out plan. And if everything was developed in there, then, then this traffic and all the other traffic is still gonna be handled by those specific streets, and if they will handle that volume, then they're okay. So.
What, what I was thinking was. On, in the Anderson Ranch project, the, the, the issue for the, for the surrounding residents was the increase in traffic. Well, the increase in traffic is gonna happen even if we don't, you know, even if it's a different project. It's, it's a project that's, it's, that property is zoned for this density of use, this type of use that creates this type of traffic. You know, the, it seems to me that, that if you are concerned about those things, then you should be master-planning those areas differently. And not, not having them so that they're gonna have that, that kind of negative impact on her, on an existing neighborhood. So I think that what he's said here is pretty clear and, and really helps the commission justify making decisions for, for developments that are in fact gonna increase or gonna have a detrimental impact on a surrounding property because of traffic.
Detrimental is maybe not even the right word.
Right, not the, not the right word, but it's gonna have an impact on, on the surrounding properties, or it's gonna increase traffic regardless of what the development is.
Which some would consider detrimental.
Lee, can we go back to, on number two, uh, two? Uh, let's see, it was, I get, I get lost here because I got two pieces, two sections. But anyway, on, um, special use permits, and then, oh yeah, A2. May approve an application that provides, this is, it's the same language, it's the same language that we had before for the master plan, where it says, provides a public benefit even if some, and I actually just noticed that I had some, some wording here that might, you might be able to re, reword it, rather than saying even if some, saying when the public benefit clearly outweighs the adverse effects of, of granting the special use permit.
But you're under ma, are you under master plan?
No, I'm on the, I'm on the special use permit.
But which fi, finding A, which relates to master plan compatibility or no? Am I on the one?
No.
Page, page 20, it's just the same verbiage.
I know, it relates to master plan compatibility, right?
Under special use permits, findings.
Yeah.
Five A2. In, in considering this finding, the commission shall, one, and then two, may approve an application that provides a public benefit even if, or I, and I would suggest maybe saying when the public benefit out, clearly outweighs the adverse effects, rather than saying some. It gives you some basis for making that decision.
Yeah, the problem is, is every, all the public opinion that comes in has all the reasons of why it's not very clear that it benefits any of the public. You know, there, it's the clearly part that makes me nervous on that.
I'm just trying to get the some out of there, because I think that's more, more subjective.
Mr. Chair.
Ben Johnson, Deputy District Attorney for the record. I just wanted to add a suggestion, because I don't want you to spend too much time worrying about specific wording, because this hasn't gone through, I'll call it the district attorney's wood chipper yet. So it's, it's more helpful, I think, just to get the substances, substance of what you want rather than specific language, because even after I review it, and you can take that tandem parking ordinance as an example, if you go back and look and see what you saw at the planning commission level versus what was presented to the board of supervisors, it'll look night and day, because after it went through me, I mean, I'm still a novice, you know, drafter, it went to the assistant district attorney who used to work for the LCB, so he's a master, and it looks different. And so that, same process is gonna happen here while he will go through. So I just don't want you to waste time, and I know it's not necessarily a waste, but just spend too much time worrying about how it's worded. I mean, if it's, if you want a specific idea, I would recommend, you know, proposing language like that or an idea in general, rather than trying to focus on how something could be worded today.
Okay, thank you. Well, I guess we're giving him the idea.
Well, I guess that, you know, does your, does your suggestion impact the very, the first thing we considered under master plan, which is consistent with the master plan policy and?
I was just thinking of it.
Because we're back to using public benefit again.
You know, it is a specific project, but the master plan, it's, you know, there's something specific.
Okay, okay.
Okay, I guess I want clarification from the commission, because with respect to this concept, I'm hearing two different things. First, I'm hearing the finding says, let's find substantial compliance, that's what we're looking for, substantial compliance, it's not 100% compliance. Substantial compliance is adequate, I've heard that. Now, in California, they have something called a finding of overriding consideration. Finding of overriding consideration is very similar to what you're looking at here, where it says, okay, we might have things, we can't check every single box, but we have this finding of overriding consideration, AKA, public benefit, and based on that finding of overriding consideration, we're going to approve this. So I guess I'm not clear on where the commission is in terms of when you read this section. Are you saying, okay, there's this public benefit which is akin to a finding of overriding consideration, or are you just saying, okay, we're gonna stay with substantial, and we recognize we're not gonna check every box with substantial, but it's a subjective decision that this commission gets to make? Because I'm, I feel like I'm hearing both.
I'm saying substantial.
Yeah, and I just noted that under the master, under special use permit, it doesn't, it says consistent with, instead of substantial compliance, so we can suggest substantial compliance is the right term, is what you're saying.
Yeah.
I really think we shouldn't change it. I mean, I don't, I'm, I hear what you're saying, that, yeah, we do run into these hurdles sometimes kind of explaining the process, but I think that current finding, the proposed amendment is substant, is in substantial compliance with the goals, policies, and action programs of the master plan, I think that covers it personally. I understand, and I also agree with what Commissioner Asson's saying, I agree with what Commissioner Wiggins is saying completely in, in removing and adding stuff if we're gonna keep it, but I'm not sure we need to change it. I don't think we need to add it.
Except, but in the second bullet there, with, based on the discussion earlier, that second one would read, may, may approve an application that may, that, or action, oh, sorry, I'm reading, why am I reading it up there? It's right in front of me. May approve an action, may approve an application if some of the goals or policies or action programs are inconsistent with the proposed amendment? Because we took out the public benefit statement, or suggested that that should be removed as part of the criteria.
Now we are confused.
Yeah, what?
Yeah, let's just leave the language as you have it.
Yeah. Okay.
Because I, I, I like having the, the considerations, the list of considerations when making that finding. I think it's very helpful.
Just need to check out the, well, even if, in the second bullet.
Yeah. Is that?
Are we set?
I'm, I just have a question, and it, regardless, regardless of what we're doing with that, I would like a little clarification, because on the surface, it makes sense that we can approve something that is, you know, not in complete compliance with the goals of the master plan, but really, when you dig into it, the purpose of us approving any sort of, and any of this stuff is because it is supposed to be because it meet, it is in accordance with the goals of the master plan. So I'm, I'm a little confused about if, you know, in, in reality, we shouldn't be justifying our decisions with anything, and maybe we should, but that's what I'm looking for clarification on. Our justification should be it is in compliance with the goals of the master plan. So. So I'm confused about that second bullet.
Well, so substantial compliance.
Substantial compliance, right, yes, of course.
I mean, I, I didn't dig through the master plan to try to find inconsistent policies, so I'm going to continue to use this example. The city wants to promote open space as a policy, um, and also other things about providing housing and doing all the other things to develop a community. So there's a policy that we want open space and one could argue, well, that policy's inconsistent with more development, but that policy's there because we also have an open space program, and that master plan policy, we do want open space. And then you have a, you have a program and you have an open space master plan then element that identifies where we want open space and how we're going to get open space. So in that sense, you're right that it is, what your action is consistent, even though you're, even though you're taking away quote unquote, open space, someplace where there's no development, you're not, you're not, you're not ignoring the master plan and the policies that they're, even the open space, space policies being implemented, it's just not being implemented with this project.
That's the part that confuses me. It seems like it's pretty ambiguous, and disambig, ambiguous. But does, I mean, I don't, I don't, we can move on, I just kind of, maybe some, someone should put some thought into that.
Decision based on a preponderance of evidence.
Understood.
Okay. We're almost at F.
Well, I, we were, I think we left on.
We were doing traffic.
Yep.
And I think we finished traffic.
Okay. And then the last one is, says the same thing. Yeah, there is, yeah, so the, the last one says the same thing, so unchanged, still, that's our, that's our own finding in Carson City, we own that one, well, not overburning existing public facilities, plan to keep that. Okay. The only other thing, I'm going to move on, we're this, we're done with the special use permit and those findings, I was going to move on to variants, um, that's, those are the last comments I have. Can I move on to variants? Which would be on, findings are on page 23 of the marked up version, paragraph five. All right, this one, I could almost fit them all on one screen here, but I go across two screens. And basically here, the, the findings still, they, they basically say the same, same intent. What we're proposing to do them is kind of more of the, more of the verbiage, that's more common that communities, communities use, it's the basis of why you need a variance, which is basically that because of special circumstances that are applicable to the property, that's a real important part of it, including shape, size, topography, um, and currently we say locations to, of surroundings, which has been a difficult one that we've kind of struggled with what that means in different circumstances, so that's, that's the highlighted red to red portion there. So relation to surround, which changed to relation to surrounding properties at the time of enactment of the regulation for which the variance is being sought, and again, that's, that's proposed, that, so based on something specific to the property or its relation to surrounding properties, a strict application of a zoning ordinance would deprive the subject property of a privilege enjoyed by other properties in the vicinity or within the same zoning district. We'll stop on that one, any questions on that?
Okay, I have, I have a comment on that one. The way I read that is, um, something can be in the vicinity of a, of a project that's neat, wants the variance, could be in a separate zoning district.
Yes.
And it seems to me that the, the appropriate thing to happen there is, is for the property to be rezoned rather than to grant a variance. If it's, if it's adjacent to a, like, somebody's in the, in a commercial district, but it's adjacent to an industrial district, and they want to do a, a similar industrial use in the, in this commercial district, they should ask for the property to be rezoned rather than, than getting a variance for it.
What if then they want to sell and someone wants to do commercial there?
Same thing.
They have to go back and get it rezoned again?
Well, no, if it's commercial and it's zone commercial, they can do it, they don't need a vari, they don't need, this, this finding is, wouldn't be applicable to that one.
Do you think it says that? That if?
Yeah, that's the way I read it. I think it, the one way to clear it up would be to just take out the or, and just say, by other properties in the vicinity within the same zoning district.
No, the, the or relates to special circumstances applicable to the property. Shape, size, topography are easy, right? Those are always, those are understandable, those are things that are applicable to the, to the property. So I think, you know, the, the remainder of that is what are the, what are the circumstances applicable to the property? And I'm very open to suggestions here, but, you know, as it reads, what are the circumstances are its relation could, would be its relation to surrounding properties? I don't know what that, you know, now, I think at the time of enactment of zoning regulation means, um, if you're setback, so that has to do, you're, you're?
I'm concerned with the last phrase in that sentence. Privileges enjoyed by other properties in the vicinity or within the same zoning district.
In the vicinity should be stricken.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
That's what I think.
Um, so I think it says vicinity, so, so another, here's, here's another, here's a real example, um, that we, that we've had in the down, in the downtown, um, I forget the zoning district, let's just say it's single family residential, um, single family residential 6,000. But there's a lot of old houses that don't, that are really old in that, that don't meet current 20-foot front setbacks in particular. And there's a, and there's a lot of houses in a row that are in the vicinity that have a 10-foot or 15-foot setback, let's say. Now, typically, you know, to your point, that's not typical in the zoning district to, to allow somebody to go to 10, but in this case, in the vicinity, they are at 10 feet, so this property would then have the same ability as, as the properties in the vicinity. Maybe it's in the vicinity and in the same zoning district is what you're getting at.
Yeah.
In the, I, maybe, well, I just, just talking it through, maybe it's in the vicinity and within the same, within the same zoning district.
Yeah.
In the vicinity with, not or, in the vicinity within the same zoning district.
Yeah.
Strike the or.
Yeah.
Would that address your issue?
Yes.
I agree, I agree too.
I struck the or. It's, it's saying that, you know, if, 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 if the other, if the house is next to you or, you know, five, you know, five houses away, but you're in the same zoning district, and you want to be just like that house five, five away, you can do it. But if it were in, if that five house, that fifth house was in another zoning district, you wouldn't be able to do it because it's in a different zoning district, it has different rules applied to it.
Yeah, so, so what I'm getting at is if we take away or, now it's defined, that a zoning district is a hard line, that if your neighbor happens to be in the other zoning district, but your houses are identical, now I have to go in for a variance. Right? Am I reading that? As opposed to, I'm in the vicinity, hey, I'm next door, I meet this requirement.
Yeah, but that's when, that's why I said you should be changing the zoning district if, if that's the case, if it's next door and you're, you know, one or the other of those two places.
What's harder to do?
It costs more money, I know that.
The right thing to do, to go to a different setback is to be zoned properly for that. This is the exception, and I think, and I, I understand what he's saying is, you know, if there's a commercial use, you're getting, eventually these districts get next to each other somewhere, if there's a commercial use, just because the commercial use has zero setback, doesn't mean the residential use next to it should have zero setback. If they want zero setbacks in those type, they should be zoned commercial for that. That's what you're saying. Moving on, B is also on this page. You, where, where currently it talks about necessary for the preservation and enjoyment of substantial property rights of the applicant, which I think is addressed generally in, in the other findings inconsistency rather than just property rights. Uh, the new one would say the strict appu, and this is one that's a more common verbiage for this type of finding, the strict application of the regulation would result in peculiar and exceptional practi, practical difficulties or exceptional and undue hardship. Any issues with that verbiage? And then the last one, uh, the new, the new finding, the granting of the variance will not, under the circumstances of the particular case, be materially detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare, welfare, or injurious to property or improvements in the vicinity. And it says pretty much the same thing that it says now there as well. But, I, you know, one of the things that come, so we've had this discussion about public health, safety, and welfare, um, and lining out what that means. So this means something different than with other uses, and I'm not sure, I tried to look at it because with other things, a variance should, is not creating odors and noise and things, a variance is not, is never for a use. So it's, you're going to have, I don't know how to further define these, it's not, I haven't found it further defined elsewhere, I think that's just a general, you're going to have to make your considerations based on the evidence. Any questions on that? With that, that concludes my presentation of kind of the substantive issues I wanted to address and bring to your attention specifically. So at this point, we'd be, be happy to go back and discuss any other aspects of it. And before we conclude, of course, I mean, we're certainly here to take questions and and comments, uh, to take to the board of supervisors, I'll note for anybody watching now that, I'll say it again at the end, we're still, will be taking public comment, anybody who wants to submit it to the planning division, this is obviously available on the city's website for this meeting, the, the packet with the proposed changes. Anybody's welcome to look at it, provide comments to the, to the planning division office for consideration.
I've got a couple of general questions. On the, on the, um, on the variance section, when we approve a variance, does it get recorded? Does it run with the land? Because we don't say that in here.
It's, that's true, especially use permits too.
We, we don't say anywhere in here that this gets recorded.
Well, the, yeah, no, getting recorded and doesn't, it is not necessary for it to run with the land like a, like a special use permit, it stays with that building. So a variance like, again, it's tip, it's going to be, it's not a use, it's going to be a physical structure and, and some, some variance to a requirement, it's going to be there. And, and there are provisions, now that I say that, talk about expiration, there's some, if a, were the provisions about structures being destroyed and then coming back? Yeah, there's, there should be provisions in there if a structure is, is destroyed and it. Oh, that, that's right, that gets into, yeah, that gets into Title 1804, it's under, under nonconforming uses and structures is where it talks about. If it goes away, in other words, if somebody builds a garage, gets a variance setback, but they tear down the, tear down the garage, that's where the provisions are when, of that you're, it can't be real built, rebuilt, after a certain period of time, it can't be rebuilt except in conformance with the standards as they are today.
Okay. In, in the section under temporary use permits, uh, on all our other permits that we allow people, there's a, there's a timetable. We say when you submit the permit, you know, we'll react within 45 days or 65 days, there's a time limit. Under the temporary permits, there's, there's no time for response. And, um, I, I guess my other question would be to go along with that, does the, does things like the epic rides, uh, the wine walk, and the farmer's market, do they fall under this category or are they in another category?
Special events are a business license function under Title IV.
Okay, okay, so that's.
There are provisions for those things.
They're, they're different.
Yeah, those are diff, those are exceptions, there are two, two zoning requirements of, often, to, and they're, they're temporary, these are temporary uses, those are, those are special events, they do not get temporary use permits. Temporary use permits are, are rarely used, but, but we've used them.
But there is no, there is no, there is no time in here.
A time in which we have to act on an application that's complete, yeah, I, I will include that, I'll look at other ones. That's not a, because it's, it's not like a special use permit or master plan amendment or those other ones that are in R S that have limit, time, time limits, but, um, let, let me look through it, make sure there's not one.
It looks like we should have a time to react.
Right, it's within, whether it's 15 or, or 30 days probably.
Whatever, whatever it is, it just needs to be a number.
Yeah.
And, and.
Consistent with the other applications that, to have that in there, yeah.
And finally, on, on, uh, the fees and service charges, 18.02.055, does this, and I've asked this question before about some other fee schedules and things, does this come better as a schedule somewhere instead of as part of the ordinance? Because in that way, the board of supervisors can change it by resolution instead of by having to rewrite the whole ordinance. And I know that, and when some other things we've looked at, there are fee schedules, and it just seems to me from a, from a clean standpoint, if, if they were scheduled somewhere, then it's easier to handle than if anything in here changes, then you have to change the whole, uh, ordinance. And it just seems cumbersome.
Yeah, over, over the years I've been here, we've gone back and forth, the cities, the city's gone back and forth on that. It's in here as an ordinance, it's on other things, it's resolutions, I think more recently, it's resolutions and, well, I, I, I think if that, if that's the way the city's going generally with fees throughout, throughout the ordinance is be a decision of the DA's office, and that's how, then we'll do it that way.
Well, it's just, it's just more effective that way.
I think it's worth showing, I don't think we want to delete it here in terms of showing it as substantive changes, but that would be something in the final draft version that gets, that gets worded to be, um, adopted by resolution, and we'll bring a resolution forward at the same time with the fees. We're not, and the point with the fees is we're not intending to change any planning fees right now with this.
No, I wasn't suggesting that, but it's just.
It should be through, it should be through resolution that is not meant changing the ordinance every time to fix it.
Other comments?
Yeah, along that same, on the fee schedule, I had a comment about how, and I just, you know, I, I thought maybe there should be some explanation of how, if you're going to go over the, the amount, you know, plus 60, $60 an hour over 10 hours, you know, how, what are, what are the, you know, what, what hourly rates are going to be applied to that, or how, how are you going to do that?
They're writing, that's a good sign.
We'll, we'll look into that. Okay.
I will, I will give you my copy also, I have some other comments in here.
That, that'll work, thank you.
Most of them are scripted.
Write your name on them so I can get back to you if I have questions. Write your name on them so I could get back to you if I have questions.
The public is invited at this time to comment on and discuss any topics that is relevant to or within the authority of the Planning Commission, including any matters that are not specifically included on the agenda as an action item. Any public comments at this time?
Denny French, Carson City, Nevada. In the fact that I do not have your name list that I usually carry and the lack of the placards, I apologize. I'm just going to say commission and look to have you hear me. Thank you. Very hard to follow things today. I know I came in about 15 minutes late. This particular sheet, if you're not mentioning the name or the number of the page, it's hard to follow. Plus, if you say AB and such, and it's not consistent with what I'm reading, I'm lost. So in the future, if you could help me out by saying, "Okay, page such and such," and then the considerations specifically that you're making, what paragraph and section would help me? My considerations are, I brought them to Ms. Sullivan's attention, and I've been still looking to get some answers because I think when you talk about the master plan being consistent with making sure that health and safety and welfare of the community is considered, and that's what I'm anticipating you're all here for, is to meet that goal in your interpretation of such. I'm concerned with the fact that more and more places are going to the consideration that the bottom line and the deepest pocket is going to be the city. So your zoning is not only going to affect the perspective of what might be zoned to be in a place, but more importantly, in some cases, what won't be allowed in places. Places that are considered flood zones or water plains or open spaces, that even though the owner certainly has the right to sell it, that perhaps our consideration is how we zone it. In two cases that I'm considered and concerned with were the Lampa and the Anderson Ranch. The Lampa was because of the flood plain considerations and wetland considerations, and it acted as one of the natural filters for aquifers, and that will be eliminated by those developments. The Anderson Ranch is in the line of a flood plain, and I never did hear the findings of that, and that might be because I missed it verbally. And if I missed that, then I didn't necessarily look it up, so that's on my side and my shortcomings of ability to deal with computer finds and searches and such. And with those searches, however, what I have been able to find, those places are leaving the city if the Reno case, Lemon Valley, the Swan Lake area are carried over and added to. If there's a development built, it will not fall back on the developers. It will not fall back on the builders. It will not fall back on them. It will fall back on the city. And such suggestion is that the city then would be responsible for having zoned improperly, in my understanding, and I'm looking for clarification, and I'll get that better because I haven't found that. There's a place in California that ended up being fairly set on making the city that allowed a development to be now responsible for the fact that these houses have sunk and their foundations have broken, and there's no repair. They either sat on a water table that grew and expanded, breaking their foundations, and then, you know, the water went out of it and it lowered, breaking their foundations. The contractor's saying, "We did everything we could based on your zoning, your building codes, and everything properly." So it goes then to the city for having chosen a place to put places, like buildings or structures, I should say, not places, that shouldn't have been allowed there in the first place. And with the water considerations that we're looking at this year being sort of bleak as far as the amount that we've gotten and where it spills off and how it's brought to the community, whether it's in the form of rain or snow runoff, is going to make those flood plains either more or less important, those places to take that water as opposed to going to the housing in the neighborhood, housing in structures that are already existing. So those places are all the more important. If it comes off of rain, we're going to have a heck of a time. We're going to have a bunch of times. If we have heavy snow and we have a real warm bit of time come in right after, as was this last snow, the water came down really big. Now, I'm not standing in those areas to see if water's up to my knees or my ankles, but once you try to put a contractor in there and they change the format of that ground soils and the water table issues are all structured differently, that water's going to go elsewhere. It's going to take the path of least resistance. And so those water tables will be redeveloped, re-signed, relocated, all in the natural sense of nature. And so those are my concerns. So anything that relates to the master plan might have to be reconsidered, considering the fact that we're dealing with these constraints of knowing what our future is. We can't rely on the basic past information. The course of things is to be determined day to day now. Our health, our welfare, and such considered with this master plan, I've suggested that we want to push forward maybe more hotels to get our housing situation. Maybe we need to really work on a living wage, tenants' rights, certain things like that that are not part of your deal. But still, when I'm reading this, it's saying health, welfare, and safety. Well, welfare, if that's, money's going to come back, I'm going to be sued as a part of the city because I allowed you all to zone something in a place that it's now going to cost us. Those are very big concerns to me. I have to worry about my gas, electric bill, and other things. I don't want to have to build another person's house again because it was allowed to be built in the first place in the wrong location. Everything has its right location, and I think the human race maybe shouldn't have been allowed on earth, but that's another consideration. I'm glad to be here. So, but we are here, and I think we have a responsibility to look past what we'd like to do as far as development of housing and what type of housing specifically. And it's really hard for me to watch where a person is concerned about tumbleweeds as opposed to my, what I don't want to suggest is a bigger picture, but the considerations of the actual neighbors that are then going to be looking at a piece of property that changes what the character they felt wasn't. And so is it five people on a panel, or is it five against four in the audience? I'm not really figuring out why the community's not more involved. If I'm missing something, when people say, "Oh, we got this many comments," five or four comments to me is, what are we not doing as a city to get people engaged with this process? That's almost my biggest thing. I know your considerations are the specific wording of these things, which I could hardly follow. And even if I found a page and the notation, like finally found on 20 where you were, 21 I was finally catching up, and then all of a sudden you went to, you know, I'm on 16 again, trying to figure out where I went wrong because I'm totally lost. So my thing is, you're missing me. Explanations coming up, I'm not getting it. If I'm not getting it, doesn't mean that I'm the sharpest tack in the box, but I am trying to follow it. If I'm trying and I'm not getting it, what's happening to the other part of the public that aren't even having this available or the assistance of the fine staff that you have? Something's missing, and I think when you're struggling over these words, consider what we're struggling with then. And so I really just want to put it out there. I'm missing something, and I don't think it's enthusiasm. I don't think it's an attempt to follow things and be appropriate with my comments. Something's missing in the messenger, in this case, I think. So help me. Help me because I think it will help the rest of the community. You're trying to figure out the basics. So am I. If it's just a general, "Well, I can do it on the discretion of," or "If it meets this many things," or "If it meets that many." And I think the comments by the DA, Mr. Johnson, really makes sense. He's going to take out a lot of this, help you with a lot of it, and then you'll come back and fine-tune it because as it is, it left so many things open for me. I didn't really come to any conclusions on the four things that I was able to grab on to. What was the definitive definition of this? What's the definitive definition of this? And until you have those foundation definitions, I can't figure out how to work with you in being able to express my feelings. It's just my opinion. It always is. I don't speak for anyone else. But I need some, you know, because if I just read it off health and safety, something's missing because you're not, in my opinion, watching out for health or safety, let alone the critters, the bugs, the ants, the things that we need so important to us here as a community. The way we breathe, already lots of bumblebees are dying out like crazy. We have amazing amount of bees that are soil-based. They need these opal spaces, and they need a specific type. They live in the ground, and they take care of the ponderance of our pollinization, and we're not considering those. And if we're not considering those, that's our foundation. We are not going to have a place to be built on or a place worth living in. So I may be rattling up here and make no sense at all, but I hope I, at least through my rattling, display what I think is going on with a lot of other people's thought processes are just so mixed without these definitions, and you can't leave it vague. And your considerations have to really start at the foundation. The foundation is the land that we have. We've already taken it from the Indians that were very good at taking care of it to the ponderance of people that had ranches and places that were open for us to have, and they may have used them as a ranch, but they were also our water filters.
Mr. French.
I'm sorry. I appreciate your patience to that point, and believe me, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. The only other person here has a comment also. Yes, ma'am?
Good afternoon. Lori Bagwell for the record. Thank you for your time. I just wanted to, one, say thank you very much. It's rare that a member of the Board of Supervisors actually can have just a roundtable discussion with the Planning Commission, and I really want to go back to the idea of your discussion on public benefit. I'm not sure that I understood the method or the rationale the same way that I heard your rationale or discussion on public benefit. So I'd like to just give you a little bit of my flavor for you to consider. Because often at the board, when I read your minutes to help make my decision whether to uphold what you said or to overturn what you said, all I have is the evidence in the record, and I don't think sometimes we get a good dialogue as to why. So for me, the recommendation concerning public benefit was to give you the ability to have something in the code that let you say, "You know, I can't make finding number five, but it is so much of a public benefit that I am going to forego finding number five." For instance, somebody's going to come and put a project in somewhere that would not normally, whatever, fits, doesn't fit this box. I can't check it. But they're bringing 500 new jobs to Carson City that pay on average $22 an hour. So my question to you is, don't you want that authority to be able to say, "Darn, it doesn't hit all five checkboxes, but the project is of public benefit?" And so while you were looking for a specific definition, it's, I thought, for you to be able to rationally look at an individual project and be able to say, "This project's worth foregoing one of the conditions." And that way, when it comes to the Board of Supervisors, often I'm told you can only look at the record, and Lori, you're voting on the record. Well, I need the condition or the ability to say it's in the public interest versus I'm just overturning you and saying, "If this makes sense, I want to give you the latitude to make a decision that's in the best interest of the community as a whole," instead of every single thing has to check a box. So I just bring that as something for you to noodle on a little bit and say, "Oh, wait a minute. Maybe I don't have to be such a..." I know, and it's hard for an accountant type for you guys to hear this, but that you have to check every box. There are projects that you should consider because they're for the overall benefit of the community. The other discussion you had was on the fees. Mr. Borders, you're correct, and you might be remembering we had an internal audit years ago, and one of the suggestions was to take all the fees out of these and put it into what they called a fee or revenue policy. And I think when the board made the decision that we were going to rewrite all the codes, that that's when we'd start pulling them all out and create the fee policy. Because I know we're looking at Parks and Rec and all the other ones, so I just wanted to say I applaud you for bringing that up, and you're correct. It's where we want to go. Plus, I think it would be good for the public to be able to see one book. Here's all the fees that Carson City charges. You can go one place. There's the policy, and you would just maybe make that policy match the number of the code, you know, like here's 18. That's everything that deals with this title. Here's everything for business licenses. Here's everything for parks. So I applaud you guys for all of your good work, and please take into consideration the public benefit not having to be so detailed or removing it.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other public comment? Hearing none, I have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We adjourn.